Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the February 6th, 2025 City of Nashua Planning Board Meeting. Roll call. Our secretary is not here this evening. Is someone on staff? Oh, Larry, you were able to do? Awesome.
I can do it, I think.
Go right ahead, please.
Thank you. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Bob Bollinger.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, Dan Hudson.
Here.
Scott Leclair, Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Patricia Cle.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. There are two sets of minutes. The first is from our annual business meeting of January 9th, 2025, and the second is our regular meeting, also of January 9th, 2025. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review those minutes and is willing to make a motion regarding their acceptance or suggest possible modifications? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As to the regular meeting, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. None opposed? Any abstentions?
I am still going to not abstain. I did watch the meeting, so I am in favor of the minutes.
Certainly. Thank you, Alderman Cle for the clarification. Motion passes. Mr. Varley, continue, please.
Mr. Chair, I would then just make a motion to approve the minutes of the annual meeting as written.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right. Next item on the agenda, communications. Scott or Sam, any additional items since we last heard from you?
Sure, sure. Case 8240226, 11 Michelle Drive. We have updated plans. We have an up butters correspondence. And as you can see, I handed out a paper copy of the correct setbacks. That came in late today, so everything should be up to par now. And all six pages of the plan is electronically loaded for 11 Michelle. 3 Swart Street. We just updated the staff report a little bit in terms of the latest information. And 8240140292, Daniel Webster Highway, we had an engineering letter that was content with that project. And I believe all three projects have content engineering letters at this point. Would that be correct, Dan?
That's my recollection, yes.
And that's it.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Scott. All right. Next item on the agenda, report of chair, committee, and liaison. I know Ms. Harper is not here. I don't have anything to add this evening. Any other information from other board members? All right. Seeing none. We'll move along to our cases momentarily, but before I do, I do want to read the planning board procedure. The procedure of the meeting is as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision application is read by the chair, the board will determine if that application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representatives will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. The applicant shall speak to whether or not they agree with recommended staff stipulations. The board will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or with concern to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to ask questions they may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be allowed a rebuttal period, at which time they shall speak to any issues or concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. The board asks that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and try not to repeat what has already been said. Above all, the board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances. Thank you for your interest and courteous attention, and if folks wouldn't mind, if you could please put your phones on vibrate or silent. Greatly appreciated. All right. Moving along. Under old business site plans, we have none. Under new business, conditional use permits, case 825-0005, property located at 290 through 294 Daniel Webster Highway. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review this application and is willing to make a motion for board acceptance of jurisdiction this evening? Mr. Varley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion that having reviewed case number 825-0005, finding that it is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Varley. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Board has jurisdiction. If there is a member of the applicant's team that wishes to come up and present your case, please just come right up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and feel free to provide an overview. If you need to speak to any waiver criteria, certainly do so.
So my name is Brian Jaromillo, and here's a condition. Do you want me to read the conditional permit criteria?
Yes. That would be helpful, and then also if you could give us a brief overview of exactly kind of what the business plan is, you know, what's going on physically with the relocation.
So currently, there's a tobacco shop outlet in 292 Daniel Webster, Unit 6, and it wants to be moved over two stores along, which the client is renovating now and would like to open as soon as possible. The first permit criteria is the building structure or use is specifically authorized by the Use Matrix, $190, Number 15 hyphen 15 table, 15 to 1, as a conditional use. Our proposed use aligns with Use Matrix Code 137, which permits the sale of tobacco, synthetic nicotine, or electronic smoking devices with a conditional use permit. We meet the ordinance's requirement of being over 1,000 feet away from any school or youth-serving organization, ensuring that our business does not conflict with youth-focused institutions. Additionally, while our location is within 1,000 feet of any other vape retailer. That's number one. Number two is, if completed, the development in its proposed location will comply with all requirements of the article and with specific conditions of standards established in the chapter for the particular building, structure, or use. We are committed to complying with all local zoning regulations, building codes, and safety standards. Number three is, the building structure or use will not materially endanger public health or safety. Our business operations include robust age verification for vape sales, secure product storage, and responsible marketing, all of which prioritize public health and safety. Additionally, by operating as a supplier for other vape shops, we support responsible business practices within the community. Number four is, the building structure or use will not substantially devalue abutting property. Our dual-focused business model will strengthen the commercial appeal of Daniel Webster Highway without adversely impacting nearby property values. Number five is, the building structure or use will be compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining or abutting uses in the area in which it is to be located. Daniel Webster Highway is a business commercial area supporting diverse businesses and daily traffic volumes between 7,500 and 32,000 vehicles. This traffic level is comparable to that of Daniel Webster Highway, where the approved location at 292 Daniel Webster Highway demonstrates the area's suitability for varied business models. Our business integrates seamlessly into the commercial environment, adding to the neighborhood's adversity. Number six, the building structure or use will not have substantial adverse impact on highway or pedestrian safety. Our location offers ample parking, effective traffic management, ensuring that pedestrian and highway safety will not be compromised. This allows us to operate smoothly within the existing commercial infrastructure. Number seven, the building structure or use will not have a substantial adverse impact on the natural environmental resources of the city. We are committed to environmentally sustainable practices such as responsible sourcing and waste management in full compliance with Nashua's environmental standards. Number eight, adequate public utilities and community facilities are available to the property to ensure that the proposed use will not necessitate excessive public expenditures in providing public services. The property is well-supported by current public utilities and infrastructure, meaning our operations will not place any burden on public services. And number nine, that the use on street parking in the downtown zoning districts is consistent or compatible with the existing use of street parking in the area. This criterion is marked as non-applicable, NA, as our location is outside the downtown area and provides sufficient off-street parking for both customers and staff. Those are the two points of criteria that we have.
Thank you for the waivers. Certainly. Certainly. Go right ahead, please.
The request for waiver from a 1,000-foot distance, requirement from another like business. We're writing to respectfully request a waiver from the National Land Use Code S190-15D6, which stipulates a 1,000-foot minimum distance between similar retail establishments selling tobacco, synthetic nicotine, or electronic smoking devices. Our proposed location is over 1,000 feet away from any school or youth-serving organization, aligning with the ordinance's primary intent to shield youth from such establishment. However, we acknowledge Tobacco Barn is located approximately 750 feet from our premises at 292 Daniel Webster Highway, Unit 8, Nashua, New Hampshire. The presence of this nearby smoke shop highlights a strong market demand in this area as we see our role as complementary rather than competitive. Given our focus as a vendor, we aim to supply other vape retailers with quality products rather than focusing on direct customer sales. This business model minimizes the potential of competition and promotes a cooperative retail environment within the community. Also, our business tobacco outlet has been established since 2020 at 292 Daniel Webster, Unit 8, two years before the Code 190-15, and our proposal to move to 292 Daniel Webster, Unit 6, St. Plaza. The business name and owners will remain the same, Tobacco Outlet, under Mr. Sunny Patel as owner. In light of these considerations, we respectfully request that the planning board grant a waiver for the 1,000-feet distance requirement. Our unique vendor-based business model is aligned with the Nashua commercial landscape, offering a diversified approach that supports local businesses without infringing on community standards. The waiver number two is waiver request for existing conditions on adjacent properties, 190-279EE. This letter serves as a formal request for a waiver concerning the requirement to provide detailed conditions on adjacent properties for our conditional use permit application to 292 Daniel Webster Highway in Unit 8, Nashua, New Hampshire. In 2020, I opened Tobacco Outlet located at 292 Daniel Webster Highway, Unit 8, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. There is now an opportunity to move the Tobacco Outlet to Unit 6 within the St. Plaza. Given the size and handicap access, I am kindly requesting approval for this considering general legalization ordinance S19-15 permitted uses issued in 2022. I would appreciate consideration for this matter at the earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to take an opportunity to discuss just, are you gaining any physical area? Is the store bigger? Are there any enhancements to the shop?
Yep, the store will be a little bigger than what it is now.
Yeah, the new store is going to be bigger. It will help us to grab a better access to handicap. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all I have for the moment, but obviously I'd like to turn it over to the board. Questions from the board at this time. Alderman Cle, please.
So the question in front of us is that you're going to move the one that's located at 292 to this new address of just down the road, placing you closer to the other tobacco vape shop. Is that correct?
That won't make difference.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you could just introduce your, you're allowed to speak, certainly. Just introduce yourself for the record and just speak into the mic.
Sunny Patel. It's just two shops away. Same plaza, same buildings, same everything.
So may I?
Oh, certainly. Continue.
So you're going to actually have a second shop?
No, we're going to close this one, and we're just moving to the bigger shop. But that's going to be still the same name, same lot, same owner. It's going to be exactly the same. Just move it from Unit 8 to Unit 6.
So within the same, may I, I'm sorry. Same plaza. So it's within the same plaza.
Can I show you a picture of it? So that you can have a better view.
I can see it here.
Sorry.
Sorry, Adam.
That's okay. Okay. They're just moving within that same, so within the same plaza. Okay.
It's about 40, 40 feet over.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to be the same name, the same owner. It's just moving.
I will be honest. I do, I am the author of the legislator of the thousand, of the 1,000 feet, so I do tend to be a little sensitive of when we're trying to open up new vape shops or moving them and so on. So, but if it's just moving the same one that's already existing, just a few feet, I can understand. I'm not trying to hurt any existing businesses, so.
Thank you, Alderman Cle. Other members of the board this time? Mr. Hudson, please.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with the proposal. I just, I don't know if you've been informed, but we just request that you update the sewer permit for the unit. We just, although it doesn't appear there's going to be any changes to the unit, we like to track who's in there. So you'll just need to go to the engineering department and get an updated sewer permit. I don't believe that there's no cost for that or anything like that. It's a record-keeping thing for us. Thank you.
Other members of the board? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. I am going to give an opportunity to the public, so let me just. Anyone in the audience this evening that wishes to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? Seeing none. Any member of the audience wishing to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Throw it back to the board for one last chance. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Feel free to take a seat, and I'm going to close the public hearing at this point, and we'll go into deliberation. Thank you. My general thoughts, I think, are somewhat aligned with Alderman Cle. You're physically relocating the same shop 40 feet away. I think the intent of the prior legislation isn't necessarily 100% applicable to this particular scenario or as a pre-existing condition. So that's my general big-picture thought. I think on the CUP criteria, I think they've established a pretty good record of why they would be compatible. As far as the waivers, I think obviously we talked about the big one with the 1,000-foot distance. The second one is one we pretty regularly see with showing physical conditions. But anyway, those are my general thoughts, but I'd love to hear from other members of the board. Or not. No, it's okay. Alderman Cle, go right ahead, please.
Thank you. I always say that oftentimes we come with personal biases. I have personal bias against vaping at someone, but I'm not here to vote my personal bias. It's a business, and you're business first. You've been in business. There's never been anything wrong with your business and so on. You've met the criteria. You're only moving a few feet. I have nothing that I could say negative about this, so I'm going to vote in favor of this, even though every part of me is screaming, "Say no, say no, say no." I couldn't do that to you, so I will be voting in favor, which is the right thing to do. So?
Thank you, Alderman Cle. Other members of the board? There's no further discussion. I think we might be at the point where we'd be willing to entertain some motions. I think, again, just by our relatively new procedure, we would first need to vote on the specific waiver requests and see how that plays out, and then move along into the conditional use permit criteria. But is any member of the board at this time willing to make a motion regarding the requested waivers? Mr. Varley, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. As to new business, 825-0005, I would like to make the following motion with respect to the two waivers requested. And that motion would be to grant the requested waiver from Section 190-279EE, waiving the requirement to show existing conditions, and that be with the finding that, circumformally with the regulation, would pose unnecessary hardship, and that the specific conditions of the land or site indicate that the waivers, as granted, will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then additionally, to grant the waiver request from Section 190-15D6 to waive the requirement that facilities with the primary use designated with the subscript 3 be a minimum of 1,000 feet away from light classified uses. Similarly, with the finding that circumformally with the regulation would pose an unnecessary hardship, and that the specific circumstances of the site indicate that granting the waiver will still properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley to grant the two requested waivers. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Varley, I imagine you're going to continue, but one quick question before I do. There are no conditions listed. Based on Mr. Hudson's commentary earlier, should we add the building permit filing as?
Updated sewer permit prior to issuance of a CO.
Sewer permit? Update prior to issuance of a CO? Okay. That's acceptable? Okay. All right. Pardon the interruption, Mr. Varley. If you wish to continue, please do so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, as to new business, case number 825-0005, I would now like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit application pursuant to Section 190-15, finding that the conditional use permit application meets the approval criteria detailed in Section 190-133F, and that will be with one subsequent condition, that condition being that the applicant will obtain a new sewer permit for the new location prior to certificate of occupancy being issued.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. You're all set? Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great evening. All right. Moving along. Next item on the agenda, new business subdivisions. Case 824-0226, property located at 11 Michelle Drive. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review this application and is willing to make a motion for the board accepting jurisdiction? Mr. Hirsch?
Move to accept jurisdiction on 824-0226.
All right. Motion by Mr. Hirsch. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Motion passes. If there's a representative of the applicant or the owner, please feel free to come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Hardigan. I'm an attorney at Godismane &amp; Hollis. On behalf of the applicant, Tom DeIngeley, the owner of 11 Michelle Drive, the engineers of record are Maynard &amp; Paquette and could not make it tonight, so you get me instead. This is a fairly easy subdivision in the world of subdivisions, I would say. It's the largest lot in the neighborhood. We got a variance for frontage and lot width just along the road. Other than that, it meets all other regulations. We're asking for three of, I would say, your standard waivers. The first being not to show all existing conditions with 1,000 feet of the property lines. I think that would be showing the whole neighborhood, so that was why most other requirements are shown on the plan, just not outside of the lot. The waiver to not provide for a lighting plan. There's no lighting changes, et cetera. And lastly, not to locate underground utilities. There are existing above-ground utilities on this lot, so there's really no point in showing you anything underground. I think we've met all requirements. Engineers are happy. Fire department gave us a new address. I don't know if you, as a board, have any questions or if there's anything you want to specifically ask, but I like to think that this one's pretty easy.
Mr. Varley, please, go right ahead.
Thank you. Just, I'm assuming you've seen the letter from the concern to butters that's in our packet?
Yes.
Asking or expressing concern in particular about blasting. So I'm just wondering if you can speak to, have you yet determined whether there's going to be any blasting and what that might look like?
So the intent right now is to hand this, sell it to a builder, so that is not my client's or the applicant's purview as of right now. But as that moves forward, all ordinances, explosives will be, all codes will be complied with. The engineer didn't seem to think that there would be a major ledge issue that would require too much, considering the entire area is already built up. Just because there's boulders on the surface doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be a need for major blasting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I didn't see it noted unless I missed it, but is there any sidewalk requirement here, Dan, fund or in lieu of?
It's across the street.
Didn't specifically evaluate that, but I guess testimony is there's a sidewalk across the street, and it's a small two-lot subdivision, so it's a fair question, though.
If you have a sidewalk across the street, you generally are kind of forgiven.
Okay.
I don't desire a sidewalk there.
I was just. I was just trying to.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
Okay. But if engineering is okay, and staff seems to be okay, is that something, without trying to muddy the water, is that something that would still require a waiver or? Or is that...
I just confirmed in the code sidewalks need to be provided on at least one side of the street.
Okay.
So we're all set.
Okay, understood. I appreciate the clarification, gentlemen. Thank you. Other members of the board? All right. Seeing none at this time, Ms. Hardian. I'm going to open it up to the public. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? Scott or Sam, folks we have on Zoom, are they just applicants' representatives? Or do we have anyone wishing to, raising their hand at the moment?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll move along. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this application? All right. Seeing none. One last chance for the board. Any further questions of the applicant? All right. Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. We'll go into deliberation. Dan, I think personally my biggest thing was making sure engineering was satisfied. I know there was a few cleanup items when the application first came through, but if you think they've sort of crossed the Ts and dotted the Is, by and large, I think they, I'm satisfied, so.
So, yeah, I think they have. I mean, the first submission we had was missing some information. We wanted them to add some contours and things to kind of prove out that this was a buildable lot, at least not knowing what's underground exactly, but at least that it could be graded out accordingly. So that, all that information's been added to the plan. We thank them for that. So we have issued a note that we're satisfied with the plan and support proceeding.
All right. The only other thing I'll add, it would appear as though the waivers are not tremendously adverse. Obviously, the thousand-foot one is one we see pretty regularly. I know in that area, just given the age of the subdivision, the utility locations are above ground. Don't have any strong opinions one way or the other on the lighting plan, but I didn't know if the board had any further thoughts on the specific waivers that were requested.
I mean, I would say they're, none of them are particularly unique or troubling from my perspective, so.
Okay. All right. Further commentary or input from the board? Mr. Barley, please.
I guess, just briefly, just to add for the record, I know the applicant touched on it in my, the response to my question, but just because it was so explicitly raised by a bunch of different butters, I just wanted to note that obviously whoever ends up with ownership of the property for purposes of developing it is going to have to go through the standard regulatory process before they engage in any blasting. There's, you know, city ordinances that pose, I think, relatively strict standards before you can go and do any blasting. So just for purposes of the record, to the extent that any of you butters end up, you know, reviewing the minutes of the proceedings for tonight, just to put that out there so that they understand that there's a process that the applicant or that the developer would have to go through before they can engage in any blasting.
And I would agree a hundred percent, Mr. Barley, especially given the overall condition of the neighborhood, proximity of homes and such. Obviously, you know, there's a whole separate procedure that would go into that subsequent to this, but your comments are duly noted and the letter was certainly recognized and absorbed by the board on that topic. Anything else at this time? All right. If there's nothing else, would any member of the board be willing to consider making a motion? First, with respect to the granting of the three waivers that were requested? Mr. Barley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would make first a motion as new business eight twenty-four dash zero two two six, subdivision to grant the waivers requested, specifically to grant the waiver from section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine, requiring showing of conditions within a thousand feet of the property boundaries on the subdivision plan, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship and the specific circumstances of the site or land would allow for properly carrying out the spirit and intent of the regulations while granting the waiver. Second, from section one ninety dash two seventy-five A, otherwise requiring provision of a lighting plan, again, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship and that due to the specific circumstances or conditions of the land, granting the waiver will allow for carrying out the spirit and intent of the regulations. And then third, from section one ninety dash two twenty-one C, waiving the requirement to provide underground utilities, once again, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship and that the specific circumstances or conditions of the land indicate that granting the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations in this regard, specifically noting that this is an existing settled neighborhood with all overhead utilities currently.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Barley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Barley, would you like to continue the thought?
Sure. So I would now make a motion as the new business eight twenty-four dash zero two two six, granting the requested subdivision approval. And that motion will be granted, finding that the plan meets the criteria outlined in NRR section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G with thirteen conditions subsequent, all as described in the staff report.
All right. There is a motion by Mr. Barley to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Actually, I have one. Are the dates on the engineering letter correct? Is there anything more recent than, I think it was the twenty, the thirtieth, rather?
The thirtieth is referenced in condition B.
Oh, no, but is that the most recent letter? There's been nothing recent. Okay, understood. Got it. All right. That was the only discussion I had. So that motion by Mr. Barley is still out there with a second by Mr. Hirsch. There's no further discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, also under new business subdivisions, case eight twenty-four dash zero two two seven, property located at three Swart Terrace. And Scott and Sam, it's my understanding, we're going to have a Zoom chime in for the presentation this evening? Or is that...
I actually don't believe so, no.
Oh, not anymore? Okay. Very good. I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Earl Blatchford from Hayner Swanson, representing the applicant. Did you, did I mishear? Did you say Swart Terrace? It's actually three Swart Street.
Oh, my goodness. My apologies. I misspoke. It is Swart Street and I had Terrace on my mind. Property located at three Swart Street.
It starts immediately on the other side of Berkeley.
I know. I'm just, I'm getting my...
Should, did we take a motion to accept jurisdiction?
We did not. I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. I'm all over the place tonight. I apologize. One more, Mr. Blatchford. Is any member of the board read the application and is willing to make a motion regarding board acceptance? Mr. Hirsch?
Motion to move to take jurisdiction in case eight twenty-four dash zero two two seven.
All right. Is there a second? Alderman Klee, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. We have jurisdiction after several, several major errors. The floor is now yours, so please go right ahead.
Thank you. Again, Earl Blatchford from Hayner Swanson, representing the applicant and owner, Tease Family Revival Trust. They were unable to attend this evening because of some family commitment. The purpose of the application, we're seeking a two-lot subdivision of the existing residential lot at three Conant Road, which the Tease family recently purchased. This property abuts their residential property, which is located around the corner at ninety-three Concord Street, which was a big motivator from them to purchase this property. Just very quickly, the lot information, it's identified as map forty-eight, lot fifty-nine. It's one point three six five acres. And it's located at the corners of Concord Street and Swart Street and Swart Street and Berkeley Street in Ward Three and has frontage on all three streets. It's zoned RA urban residence, which requires a minimum lot size of seventy-five hundred square feet. The, all of the butters are single-family residences on all sides. Existing utilities in Swart Street, municipal sewer, Panachuk Water, natural gas and overhead utilities, electric telephone cable. The existing site characteristics, three Swart Street has one, existing one, single-family house with full basement and a detached garage, approximately a hundred-year-old residential structure. Driveway access egress is from Berkeley Street. There's actually two curb cuts close by because it's a long U-shaped driveway, which goes back to the existing carriage house garage, detached garage. The existing house, which is closer to the corner of Swart Street and Berkeley Street, is situated in a fairly level topographic portion of the site. And then there's a more wooded portion of the site all along the Concord Street frontage, which provides a nice buffer from the busier street. As I said, the proposal is for one lot into two. The existing house is to remain on new lot fifty-nine, new lot three thirty-four. There's no intention to build on that anytime soon, but we did provide a site grading plan just to prove that the lot can support a new house. But the owner's intent is to really maintain it as a green space adjacent to the existing residence and use it as, you know, an extension to their existing property for them and their kids to be able to enjoy. The, as part of the site grading plan, we did a drainage analysis. We're providing a leaching catch basin, as is required, to basically, and we've graded the lot so that it'll capture the roof, the driveway, and most of the yard area. And we've done an analysis to show that the way this is designed, there won't be any impacts to any neighbors if this lot is developed in a similar fashion. But again, that isn't the intention at this time. We did go to the zoning board for a couple of, it's a little unusual because the way it's subdivided, the applicant wanted to kind of keep as much of the green space while still providing a substantial lot to go with the existing residents. That lot, new lot fifty-nine's almost three times what the zoning requires, and then the remainder is considerably more than that. So it, the existing garage and a small shed end up on the new lot three thirty-four and won't be used by the existing residents. And of course, right now, everything is under single ownership, so. At such time as they might sell the existing house, then they would need to provide, if the new owner doesn't want to put in a driveway off Swart Street, then they'll provide an easement to utilize the access from Berkeley Street to provide for the driveway, which does cross onto that lot, which they could use to access. So that's something that would have to be worked out at that time. But we are in the process of preparing an agreement to convey easement so that it's on the record that easement would be required if access from Berkeley Street is the way that they want to go. So, and because of the lot configuration, we did need a minor use variance. Because the garage ends up being, which would normally be an accessory structure, ends up being a principal structure on the new lot. So we obtained a use variance for that. And there's also, because of the same situation, there's a minor building setback encroachment of a few feet, which required a special exception, which we also received. Other than that, the plan is conforming with zoning. We have addressed all of the engineering department's comments and we've addressed all planning comments, except as noted on the staff report and the conditions of approval. We've got three waivers that we've requested, which are detailed in the request letter and which was just revised within the past week to add a third waiver. And just very briefly, the three waivers are, one, from section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine, to waive the requirement for the existing conditions and topo within a thousand feet of the site. The second request is to, from section one ninety dash one twenty-two, to allow overhead electric services to the proposed new house, if it should ever be developed, because that is the predominant, most of the surrounding residents are, have overhead electric and communications and is the standard in this immediate part of the neighborhood. And the third request from section one ninety dash two seventy-five A, request for a site lighting plan. And the letter details that further. I can get into the letter if you'd like. But those are the three waivers requested. Those are kind of all the pertinent facts. Be happy to answer any questions that the board or the audience might have.
All right. Thank you. I have none at this time, but other members of the board? Alderman Klee, please. Oh, sorry.
Thank you so much. The easement and the driveway, I understand that currently it's under one ownership and so on, but that does kind of confuse me a little bit. So the curb cut for the driveway is obviously on Berkeley Street. Is there only one curb cut right now to that property for the driveway?
Yeah, I mean, it's operated, you know, it's a single property which we're subdividing. So the way it's being subdivided kind of changes the historical function. But of course, the house right now is unoccupied. So really, the only thing that would trigger any changes would be for that lot to be sold. And then as part of, as part of the sale, they'll have to negotiate whether they want to use the Berkeley, the existing driveway for access or whether they'll do something, something different. And so it's kind of undetermined, but the... And so it's kind of undetermined, but the, the Tease family are definitely willing to provide any, you know, unnecessary easement for access if, but it, it's all kind of subject to negotiation, future negotiation when a buyer comes along.
May I?
Certainly.
And maybe this is not a question to be asked now, and if that's the case, I could, I can ask it at a later time.
Go ahead and ask.
But I guess, I guess my, my concern is, and I understand you say it can be at a later time, but because this is the historic district and so on, I'm concerned as to whether or not you could do a curb cut or something of that nature on Swart Street, or another curb cut onto Berkeley. Or, so what are the, the rules and so on? So if we did do this subdivision, and suddenly now you've got this just one curb cut, and I understand you'd do an easement, this would become a, a single opening for two different properties and...
But any, anything that happens on the new lot in the way of building or whatnot would have to go to the historic district and...
I guess, I understand that.
Yeah. So, but there's nothing proposed at this time, so there's... But yeah, it, it is within the historic district, so they do have, they do have oversight of, you know, improvements that go in there.
To clarify a little further, regardless of its presence in the historic district, the driveway standards would still apply as they do anywhere else where you're allowed twenty-four feet of curb cut. That can be spread out over multiple driveways or just one. Obviously, this is kind of a, a loop driveway right now, which is probably right around with, with two throats equalling twenty-four feet. So again, should the new lot be developed? Should the existing structure be sold and a new driveway configuration negotiated? Any future curb cut, there'd be a driveway permit through DPW, those regs come into play. Driveways do not trigger building permits, therefore they do not trigger historic district commission review.
Just one more follow-up. I, I guess my, my concern is thinking forward. I would not want to approve something here that later down the road, if they turned around and said, well, this, we don't want to say yes to this because it doesn't meet that criteria of the twenty-four feet or something like that, but we have to because to say no to them creates a hardship and they can't build on it. That's the only thing I'm thinking ahead. That's all I'm saying.
The twenty-four feet would still apply regardless if they have to come back to the planning board or not?
As long as they, no one can cry hardship for the future if... We're not, we're not setting that up then.
No.
That's all I'm saying. Okay, that's all I'm asking. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry to beat the stead horse, but just one, just one quick question in terms of the overall subdivision is, would it have been possible to subdivide in a way that, that the, the lots were, were conforming with, you know, the garage and other accessory components being on the one lot? Or would that have made the second lot not a buildable lot? Or was this just a preference of the applicant?
It was a preference of the applicant.
Okay.
And, and the zoning board was agreeable to the, the minor. Again, it was a pretty minor use variance, kind of a very unusual one, actually.
Yep.
And then a very minor special exception for encroachment. Kind of an unusual situation, but...
Yep.
No, there's, I mean, the lots are, as I previously said, both lots are well oversized for the zoning, so. It was just the applicant's preference.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the board? Oh, Dan, please.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to note that directly across the street, there's a driveway that's, for the property across the street, so the driveway proposing that, proposing lots and all, out of character with the area. So I don't, I don't understand unless that driveway, unless the property across the street's not in the historic district, I don't know where the boundary is exactly, but it seems like there is a precedent for it would be allowable.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Other questions from the board at this time? All right, seeing none? Sir, are you here to speak to this application? All right, if you're here to speak in opposition or with concern, please feel free to step up to the podium. Just identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Dan Richardson. I live at seventy Berkeley Street. Greetings to those who've, who are qualified by virtue of your certifications in planning and building. I come not really in opposition, I come with questions because I'm not very well informed in this sort of thing. One thing I do want to note to you right up front is that in the historic district, there is not one other building that presents its side to Concord Street. All of the buildings on Concord Street face Concord Street in the historic district. So I just looked at this plan tonight, I hadn't really prepared, and I see that it's facing Swart Street. And that, that seems a little bit bizarre to me. I heard that this is sort of, what, a bogey? A not, not a real plan for a house, just sort of like a placeholder or something? Is that correct?
That was the testimony of the applicant, and he'll be the one that has to address that. But I believe that was his prior testimony, but obviously he'll have an opportunity to respond to that, so.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, that's, that's what I'd like to find out is if that's normal for, I mean, it's not normal for, for the orientation of this building to be like it is, like it's presented. The other thing is the overhead service, which the prior speaker mentioned, is not exactly correct. My, my own property and others in the area have underground service, so, which is much, much more beneficial, actually, when it comes to snowstorms like we've had. I wanted to ask about the adequacy of the drawings that were in the package, if they were sufficiently complete to actually pass the planning board and get a permission to build in accordance with the drawings that are presented?
Again, you're certainly welcome to use this forum to voice your questions, but the applicant is going to have to address them. We didn't prepare the technical documentation, so it's incumbent upon the applicant to prove that he met the burden of providing qualified drawings, so.
But, Mr. Chair, if I could just speak to that, I mean, we did make a determination that the application that was presented to us was complete, right? That was...
Complete for the lot line?
It's not a lot, it's a subdivision.
For the subdivision?
Right.
Which includes the drawings of the house and...
Right, but it's, it's a subdivision, it's not a site plan. So yes, we do have the applicant preparing a hypothetical plan showing how a house could be situated that addresses various engineering issues, but it's not, it doesn't compel the applicant to build a house, a lot, for example.
I see.
Also, I just, I did want to note, directly across the street, it looks like it to Swart Street, it is the same orientation that's presented in this plan. It is fronting on Swart Street, but it has a curb cup on, curb cut, a side curb cut on the Concord Street, just for your reference.
As you've previously noted, the property forty-eight three-three-four is in the historic district, whereas the property you're referring to is not.
Right, I'm just, I'm just, just for your reference.
Okay.
You can see that that's, it was directly across the street.
Okay. The other thing is, if you'd be so kind, to talk about if the division between forty-eight fifty-nine and forty-eight thirty-three was extended to the other side to actually divide it into two different lots? If that bizarre piece that's abutting Berkeley Street, if that would be sufficient to build on?
I can't answer that question because that's not the application before us this evening, so I, I honestly don't know.
Okay. That, that's fine. I'm just asking questions, I don't know.
But, but just to be clear, if, it's not as if the applicant could subsequently subdivide without coming back to this board and seeking an additional approval? So there would have to be additional approval?
Okay, okay. And so I was looking at the lot line placement, and I had a question in my mind, was it, was it sufficiently, sufficient amount of area to actually build a garage in the, the corner pocket of that lot where the existing house is at? Would that be just like a question for the future, for whoever buys it?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, but...
Well, given, given the, for the forty-eight fifty-nine, given the setback, would that area be sufficient to build a garage?
Yeah, again, I'm not sure exactly what area, but, but any garage that were to be built would have to conform with all the zoning requirements, including setbacks.
I see, okay. Well, those are my questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. There weren't, anyone in the audience appears not to speak in favor of this? Sam, is there anyone else on Zoom with a hand raised on this one?
Not at this moment, but it does appear that the applicant himself is on Zoom, I think, just for a monitor. But if he likes, would like to speak, he's certainly welcome to raise his hand.
I'm content to have Mr. Blatchford, if that's okay with him and his client, come up and try to address those questions, so, thank you.
Earl Blatchford from Hayner Swanson. Just a, a couple of the items. As Mr. Varley correctly stated, what we're showing on the plan, I mean, this plan is strictly for a subdivision, so basically just dividing the land. No structures are proposed at this time. And what we show on the plan is just a hypothetical placeholder. Any actual building that would be proposed in the future would have to go through a building permit process. So, and that would presumably trigger the historic district review. So at this time, there's, there's nothing, and I'm not sure about the point he made. We thought from a planning point of view, it made sense to have the house oriented on the quiet side street rather than the busier main road, and leave a nice wooded buffer to the busier road. Made sense to us, but again, it's hypothetical. And then the, I'm sorry, I, the other point I wanted to speak to, kind of slipped my mind. Garage being constructed on fifty-nine? Yes, thanks, Sam. So in the, in configuring the lot, we did consider the possibility of a, an attached garage, a two-stall, basically twenty-four-foot-wide attached garage on the west side of the existing house as a, as a possibility. So we located, we located that lot line thirty-five feet from the existing edge of the house so that you've got, you could do twenty-four feet and ten feet, you know, there's a ten-foot setback, so you've got a foot to spare, so. Yeah, we took that into account, and it may never happen, but the way we looked at it, there's two ways it could go. You could either have a new driveway off Swart Street, or you could provide that access easement and come in and have the doors kind of oriented facing the back. But we did take into account as far as the lot configuration, so. But beyond that, it's all future considerations.
All right.
Those are the only two things I think that needed, needed to be clarified.
All right, thank you. Other questions from the board? All right. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing, begin our public meeting. A little unusual, just from, from the breakup and, but the waiver requests are something we've seen almost analogous to the prior application. But other thoughts from members of the board on this application? Understanding the potential, you know, ramifications of being in the historic district, I'm sure those are things that will come up if and when a building permit is ever filed. But that's not the issue presently before us tonight, it's just the subdivision of land. Alderman Cleese, please. Oh, Adam, Mike, no.
As I stated, I, I don't have any, any issues with the subdivision. I, I think it's, it's fine, and my, my only concern is, is always is that we just don't set up a precedent that we're, we're creating a, a future hardship where we, we've seen in the past where someone has a small subdivision or something like that, and, and then later on says, well, there's nothing I can do with this land, I can't do this, or I can't do that, or something. But as long as they're going to be able to either have an easement of being able to share this or have another sub, curb cut or something like that, I don't have, I don't see any issue. I don't see any issue with this, because I'm always looking to the future. I understand that one person owns all, technically own all three pieces of this, of this property, but I have to look to the future that someday that may not be the case. So as long as we're not setting up anything for a future hardship, I don't have any problems with it.
Thank you, Alderman Cleese. Other comments and discussion from the board? All right, seeing none? We at the point where any member of the board would be willing to make a motion with respect to the waiver requests? Mr. Varley?
Sure, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion as to new business eight twenty-four dash zero two-two-seven, subdivision plan with respect to the waiver requests. First, to grant, request a waiver from section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine, requiring showing existing conditions within a thousand feet of the property, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship, and the specific circumstances or conditions of the land indicate that granting the waiver will still allow for carrying out the spirit and intent of the regulation. Granting the requested waiver from section one ninety dash two twenty-one to re, to locate all utilities underground, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship, and the specific circumstances or conditions of the land will allow for granting the waiver and still carrying out the spirit and intent of the regulation, noting in that regard that this is, again, existing settled neighborhood with all overhead utilities currently. And then finally, granting the requested waiver from one section, section one ninety dash two seventy-five A for the requirement to provide a lighting plan. Once again, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship, and that the specific circumstances or conditions of the land will allow for granting the waiver while still carrying out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Varley with regard to granting of the waivers. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hudson? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Varley, would you like to continue?
So again, I would like to make a motion as to new business eight twenty-four dash zero two-two-seven, subdivision, and this would be a motion to grant the subdivision approval, finding that the plan meets the requirements set forth in section, NRO, section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G, subject to twelve subsequent conditions, all as written in the staff report.
All right, there is a motion by... There is a motion by Mr. Varley with, except, is there a second? Pardon me. Second by Alderman Klee? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Aids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, other business, review of tentative agenda to determine developments of regional impact. Has many member of the board had an opportunity to review the project list and is willing to make a motion? Mr. Hudson?
Having reviewed the tentative agenda, Mr. Chair, I find no projects of regional significance or impact, and would move that board to find the same.
All right. Motion by Mr. Hudson regarding no projects of regional impact. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Varley? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously. I don't see anything else there, Sam. Do you have anything else to add at this time?
I do not.
All right. I think we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Klee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned at 8:11.